At six o'clock, we will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Barretko, Jones.
Here.
March, Parker.
Here.
Cam.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the June 25th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any addition or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept is written.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cam?
Uh, present.
Parker?
Yeah.
President Cross?
Yes. Public comment.
I guess that's my turn.
Sure.
I talked to Steve and asked if I could come in and talk to you guys for a few minutes, but really, I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about some of the things. One of the, I split my time through here and another town in central Illinois. And so I want to talk to you guys a little about tourism and how it's affected the town down there. So you guys are coming to a point where you guys are going to have some choices to make about what to invest, how to do things, how to plan. But I only made like three copies of these, so. But that top sheet is CBS Sunday Morning came in and did a story on our town. And then sort of NBC Nightly News. And so in 2011, I get a phone call from a reporter and this guy, this lady says, hey, you want to come down and take a picture? Jimmy's gonna put up the tallest wind chimes. And I thought, well, what the heck's going on there? And so I go down there and sure enough, they got the cranes out and they're getting ready to install these wind chimes. And I think they're set down there, I want to say they're 55, 60 feet tall or something like that. And so he put them up in, I think, April of 2011. And landscaped it, looks real nice. And that summer, we had one tour bus a week coming to see the wind chimes. And it was sometimes with seniors, sometimes it was groups, sometimes it was whatever. Well, they tour around town a little bit, they go to the restaurant, they eat, they spend a little bit of money in town. Since then, he has built, I think he's in the Guinness Book of World Records for nine, but he's got either 12 or he's got some of the works, he's gonna be at 12. But regardless, those big things have turned that town to where it's a, it's a small town, nice downtown shopping area. There's a lot of retail now. And I think there's only, I bet there's only three or four businesses prior to 2011 that are there now that were there when everything else is new. And.
What's the name of the town, Chris?
Casey, C-A-I-C-E-Way. Kind of like Casey's Jungle Storm. And we're west of Terre Haute, about 30 miles. So. But anyway, so what I wanted to talk to you guys about was, you know, some things that you guys are going to be looking at. I know you guys are put through the Tiff District and some of the other stuff. And one of the things that I've learned is that people want something to do. They don't necessarily care what it looks like, because in 2011, our downtown, it didn't look very good. You know, we had a 600 employee tool and die manufacturing plant that closed and the towns decided to Piattown. So, I mean, just that stuff devastated. And, but they came, they came to see that. And then now, they said there's up to 1,500 cars a week. So, I mean, it gives you an idea of how many people are coming through there. So it's, it's just crazy what tourism can do to a town. So I was hoping you guys might explore or look at different options to use that as a way to tools. So, I don't know if you guys have questions or want me to talk about something different or parts of it.
Yeah, I mean, anything you want to talk about, I mean, anything you want to share.
I only got like 57 minutes, so.
Would you repeat for me? You said NBC Nightly News and who?
CBS Sunday Morning. Did the biggest feature, it was probably about five minutes. NBC did probably 30 seconds. But there was a significant spike after.
So is this one gentleman that kind of spearheaded this?
Yep.
Does he build this and donate this?
He's created, in the meantime, he's created a charity.
Okay.
That charity now builds all the stuff, maintains it, owns and operates, and copyrights it.
Okay.
So.
So it's a separate, it's not the village, it's a separate charity?
Yes, separate from the village.
And what's his name?
The guy's name? Jim Bolin. B-O-L-I-N. But, no, he did all on his own. He's a successful business guy down there. He's a oil and pipeline maintenance guy. He's got a big company down there. And he just had his guys start building the wind chime one day. He knew he wanted to do something. I said, how'd you think of the wind chimes? And he said, I woke up one night and I remember my grandma loved wind chimes. He said, that was it? So then, and if you see the pictures, across the street's the rocking chair. So the rocking chair is like his grandma, and then the wind chimes. And the rocking chair is probably about three stories tall. Kind of gives you an idea. But we get people from all over the place. We had, we had one guy staying this weekend and I said, where are you from? He said, oh, a small town named Okina. And I know where that's at. He's the Will County EMA Director, whatever his name is. I can't remember his name, but I knew I was gonna forget, but anyway. But people come from all over the place. And they just, they want something to do. There was a couple from Tennessee, they drove up, they saw it on CBS, and they said, hey, we want to go see that. And they just drove up, they spent the night, drove back home. I mean, it's just, it's just, you can't believe it, please see.
How long does it take to get there from here?
Uh, if you go interstate, it's about three hours. If you take, cut through Charleston, about two, two and a half, two forty. So relatively, you can make a day trip out of it if you wanted to. But essentially, it's, you know, it's a, it's similar to Piattown, probably 20 years ago. You didn't have a lot of development around here. It was fairly rural county. And, you know, they, they kind of had to dig themselves out. You know, it wasn't, nothing was coming, so.
Does the village own that trolley car I saw in one of the pictures?
No, some guy just likes driving it.
Privately owned, he just.
He just likes driving it. So he goes out, I think Saturday in some of the afternoons. I don't think he does it during the week. If you look on there, he has advertising on there, pay for the gas and stuff. He isn't making any money on it, but it pays for the upkeep and to operate it. So he doesn't drive people around. This spring, we saw Jimmy was on a tractor. He had a, he had a pay rack made out of used home people around. You know, it's just, it's a, it's becoming really, a really nice community that, that supports itself, you know? The people come in, they're doing this, oh, go see Joe down the street, he does that. Okay, well, we'll see him. It's, they reference each other, they're very interdependent. So.
Yeah, there are a lot of small towns. I went to school in Murray, Kentucky, and they claim to be the popcorn capital of the world. Can they substantiate it? Doubt it, but, I mean, they made a big deal out of it.
Sure.
Every year. They're also the used car capital of the world, and they made a big deal out of that.
Yeah, kind of like Hoops and Hoops and the Corn Jerkers.
Yep.
Same deal, they grab onto something and they take it.
Right. It, it does help when you have somebody influential that's able to kind of spearhead something like that.
Sure.
It takes, it takes money.
You have to add the drive and the money.
Right.
I mean, really. That makes it a lot easier.
Oh, it does, for sure. For sure.
Piattown's asset? We've got the windmill. You know, people, people, I think we're sick and tired hearing about the windmill, but I think it's, I think people are maybe ready for a change.
It's there.
It's there. If that thing could operate, you're not going to get 1,500 cars a week, but maybe get 3,000 people a year. Those 3,000 people you didn't have. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't have the answers.
Right.
I just, I just see the stuff that happened and, you know, when I got that phone call, I thought the guy was crazy. Why? Someone's building a wind chime. And if you had told me that before, I would have never predicted what came out of it.
Sure.
And now it's, they, we were one of eight towns that they featured in China this year as like a, some sort of travel channel exposure thing or something.
Oh, really?
And it's just, the stuff that you, that happens from that kind of thing is just crazy. I mean, the travel channel's been there twice. It's, you know, and it's just, it's just a small town with something to do. Nothing fancy. But the tourism dollars that come in, you got the shop owners, they're not making a killing, but they're able to stay open, you know, take care of their families.
Right.
You know, that, it's not the struggle. I shouldn't say it like that, but you know what I mean.
I know, I know exactly what you're saying.
So, you know, I think anything we can do to get the traffic downtown Piattown, that's, that's what it's gonna take.
Traffic period.
Yeah.
In the community is important.
Anything. So, I don't know, if you guys knew or not, I know the Legion wants to build a war memorial. And, and I know they'd like to put it downtown. That'll draw people to it. A lot of people will see Manchino's Memorial down there, that they have by.
The Parry's.
Yeah, right by, right by the elevators.
Yeah.
Yeah. Glad you guys are decision makers.
Well, thank you for sharing.
But anyway, if you guys, I'll also extend an invitation, if you guys want to come down there, you know, more than welcome to show you around, or take your wife or husband, it's a nice day trip.
Very good.
You're gonna drive the trolley?
Well, they don't let you drive the trolley. We just walk. It's probably within, most everything's within three, four blocks. So you got, a few things are farther away. Golf, he's on the golf porch, which is 10 blocks probably, pitchfork. There's a restaurant that they made out of an old barn, that's out on the highway.
How big's the golf game?
Uh, it's on there, I forgot. He's in the process of making the world's largest golf club, so. He's got a shop of, he's got four or five guys he employs full time to do this stuff. You know, those landscaping. And I thought, what? Once he built all this stuff, what are they gonna do? Well, this year, they had to, they had to strip the rocking chair and resurface it, or, you know.
Right.
Restain it, re, how we're thinking. So it's just, he's got a whole big, it's one of the pictures, there's a whole big barn that he uses for all his stuff.
And he built all of those? The same guy?
His, his, his charity, which is funded by him, yeah. Yeah, they won't let us, they won't tell us how much money he's got, but.
It's gotta be significant, yeah.
You know, we got one guy down there, he owns it, he opened a candy store. I said, Dave, why'd you open a candy store? He said, well, they wanted to open an antique store. And he said antique stores are really hard to be successful. He said, a candy store is what you need. And so I said, well, you open it. So he said, okay. It's probably one of the more successful places down there. You know, he's got, he's, he's a retired 3M marketing guy, so he's got like people signing in, he's got data from where all these people are from. It's kind of crazy. And he, he said, I don't know if it's this, must've been this summer. He said, a guy walked in, had a big backpack on his shoulders, and he said, what's, what are you doing? He said, I'm walking across the country. I don't want to stop there and see what this place was. He said, are you with that guy? This other guy across the room had a big backpack on his shoulders. He said, no, I don't know who that guy is. He said, well, that guy's walking across the country too.
Were they going opposite directions?
No, they teamed up and they walked, I still never still walk.
It's fortunate they were going the same way.
Yeah. I mean, there's all kinds of stories like that.
Yeah.
And then, and then you got these people, they go home and tell their families about it, and then somebody else comes. It just builds on itself, so.
Very interesting.
It is, it's fascinating.
Well, thank you, Chris.
Yes.
Appreciate it. I see we have Tom out there in the audience. I know you're on the meeting agenda, but I think we can go ahead and maybe talk during this time. We wouldn't be able to take any action in the Committee of the Whole, but we can at least hear what you have to say and.
I think I'm just coming off, but I should have gotten here prior to Chris getting here.
I already did it.
He's already started.
Yeah, we already did.
You got it, okay. He already started the thunder and whatnot. So, gentlemen, what I have to propose, or not me, what my brother has to propose, Chris Ivanoff, well, we all grew up in Piattown. And the letter pretty much says what, you know, a little bit of the history about us, the relations that we've got, that we had in a family, original settlers in Piattown, which, you know, means nothing to anybody today, but it's just something that we can have a history with Piattown. My brother moved away with my father and stepmother in 1976. My dad was cheap, pleased up until that point, and he retired. Then went out to Wyoming. He went to junior college, got his welding certifications from there, worked on Marathon Oil for years, which that's not in the list on there, but just a little added thing. And he got into making art. And he's been doing art for over 20 years. He makes sculptures out of farmer, farm equipment that's been disassembled. He goes to a farmer's junkyard, picks up pieces, whatnot, and puts it together. And he's got things, I had, I think I updated that to where it said it was, you know, throughout the United States, because he's got them all over the place. But because of his history with Piattown, because our mom had worked for Benet Industries at one time, he kind of threw that all together and wanted to make a donation of a statue, a structure, or a sculpture out of steel that has farm implement parts on it. But he's asking for the village for a location to go and set it. I did talk to Hoffner, Steve Hoffner. Steve's on the Historical Society board. And we talked a little bit about where that could possibly be placed, if we could use the, the windmill as a location. He suggested that on the Parkway, we have a, they have a rock flower garden combination type of thing that may be a good place to go and set it. He was very enthused about the possibility of us getting something like that for here, for, you know, tourism, whatever, to maybe start it off. We manned, but getting some others that may come in and follow along with that. But I don't know that it'll end up being a bunch of pigs or, or cows that'll be, you know, invading Piattown and being colored different things, whether they've got a patch with orange on them, or, or stripes or whatever, like Chicago's had in the past. But it's a starting point for the village if, you know, because I don't know that we've got any art, or sculptures in town. It seems like we've got a lot of, a lot of rods in the fire with what you just talked about with the American Legion wanting to go and put up a memorial, war memorial, which would be a great thing, but once again, they're kind of landlocked, they don't have much room, so maybe we'll have to be working long with you guys to find, get an allocated spot to be able to put that sort of thing in there. But it is something to draw people into town. Chris is donating his, his works and his efforts. He is looking for a plaque for that, as it says there. You know, I, I can't go and add much more than what he already has relayed to me and I put down in paper with this. It is some beautiful art, it's art, you know, it'll be out there for the public to touch and, you know, be there for years and years to come. All this equipment is, or parts are probably anywhere from 20 to 70 years old that he's used. So, to be able to build a structure. You guys have any questions that I may be able to answer for you?
How big is it?
Yeah, with the, with the, he says it'll be about 78 inches tall when completed. So it'll be a little over, it'll be split in half, six and a half feet tall, just about that point.
How wide is the base?
The base, I would say it's probably close to a 36 inch base drum that it's on. We're probably looking at a four by four area that would be concreted with a steel embedded, you know, I mean, a steel anchored into the concrete, and then this will be bolted down onto it. So he'll put, we'll put bolt holes in it to have it fastened down into the steel base plate. We've talked to, well, I haven't talked to Bob Shin yet, but I do think, because Bob's also one of those unfortunate people that has history going back to the beginnings of Piattown. And he and I are sure tell a relations, but with him having diamond steel over there, I think that black diamond, I think I can go and probably get him to make a donation of steel to be able to make a foundation for it. And I've had other people approach me that wanted to go and donate money already for it. So I haven't advertised widely because I didn't know what your opinions were on the, on the situation, whether it be acceptable or not to go and find a place for it to put it here in the village. And, you know, at that point, you know, because I don't know, the village has anything that's downtown to be able to put it downtown.
And the only place we would have would be here. I don't know where it would fit here.
Be kind of a waste, but at least if you had it, I don't know.
And, you know, it's something that you're going by the wayside. You want people to go through town, not necessarily just to town. So you need to have things that are spread out a little bit, at least in my opinion. But I, I think it should be someplace that's somewhat guarded as well, not necessarily, you know, somewhere in the mainstream where people are always going to be watching it versus, you know, possible vandalism, which, you know, they're not going to be able to do too much to it. If you, if you saw the, the video that he had there, you pretty much have to use a torch to go and bend that rebar that he's using for, for the dang things, because it doesn't, it doesn't bend on its own. But, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think as far as finding a place for it, I think it's a great idea. When it comes down to money, that, that becomes the question, you know, what we, what we're able to, to spend, you know, out of our budget, because this isn't something that we, you know, budgeted for.
Well, you're talking about rounding up.
Donations.
Donations from several sources.
Well, yeah. And, and I don't exactly know, I didn't talk to Chris in depth about his, his concepts behind the money. He did state that he wanted to have a location, had be provided a location that he could place it. He was looking for the village to supply a plaque that, like I said, I think in there was from somewhere between 350 and 500. That's what he's heard in the past, or he's got in the past for a plaque to be placed with it for other businesses that have, you know, requested to have a, that he's put out there, request to have a plaque with it. He is looking for a donation of somewhere of, you know, 500 to 1,100 dollars for transporting it out, so that would be a cost that the village would probably incur. And other than the site and putting a foundation down for it, that's basically, that's basically it, you know? So I don't think it's a huge sum of money. And the people that are donating, it's donating for the, for the materials that he's used. I mean, it's like the rebar that he had to go and buy, his welding supplies, his grinding and cleaning equipment and paint. And he had mentioned one thing that just astounded me. He said he had some, he got a quart of black primer paint that he has to put on there. This is automotive paint. And it was like 75 dollars for a quart. So, you know, when he puts it on, he's putting on the top quality materials so that it does last years and years and years before it has to be, you know, refurbished. So, it is, and that's just the, that's just the primer, so.
So, I mean, I apologize if this.
No, no.
What is the request? Is it a request? What is your request to us?
All right, he requests, as in the paper, I believe I put it, he requests for a site to go and put it. He requests for a foundation to go and put it on. I can provide, I'll provide the steel, one way or the other. I'll get the steel for, to be embedded into the concrete, so we'll probably have steel with some rebar that can set into the concrete, so it's going to be fixed, you know, in, in place. He would like to see somewhere between 500 and 1,100 dollars from the village for transportation to bring it here to Piattown. So that's as far as he, that's all, and like I said, the plaque. So that would be the outlay for the village. It might be 1,600 dollars max. Is, as far as cost, because you're not paying anything for the site necessarily, so.
Earlier, you were saying that you had talked to the Historical Society and they were interested in housing it, right?
Well, yeah. And, and I, I, I thought that I had read some years ago that the windmill was now owned by the village.
It is, it is.
And so it's kind of a, it's gotta be a cooperative effort on the part of the Historical Society and the Village of Piattown to go and have this put in. But this was a farming community, the windmill was part of the farm. We could go down to the end of the street on Corning, we got the cheese factory. At Ratchey Road and Corning is where the cheese factory was at one time. So, of course, you take, you take Third Street on down, you had the, the milk house and the milk delivery guy was right down there. And he delivered milk to everybody's houses in the bottles. I can remember that.
Chicken hatchery?
Yeah. And you had, and you had the Myers over there that had eggs that you could go downstairs to their, to the bottom of their house, the basement, and you had the egg house down there, you know?
And then there was the racetrack down, down, somewhere down where the cemetery is, somewhere down there. I remember reading about that one.
So, there's, like I said, there's, there's a lot of history that can be brought back up. I was just, I mean, when you get into this sort of thing, it's like I, I had to look for the Potawatomi to go and get what the name of Piattown was. I knew that there was a name and I wanted to get, you know, come here. For Piattown, that's what basically the Potawatomi Indians, the last tribe that we had, or group of Indians we had, were located out of Ten Mile Grove, or, not Ten Mile Grove, but it was out in Wilton Center. And there's a woods over there, Girdings Woods, and that's where they were, they were basically, that was where their little town or, or village was. And they've got a crooked road, and I'm talking to Don Cant, that goes from that area across over to County Line Road. And at County Line Road, there is a cemetery there, that, that was their burial site. Now it's owned by Cook County, or by Will County, and it's a preserve over there that nobody seems to know about, but that's, you know, that was the last place that we had the Potawatomi Indians in town, or around the town, the village. But, you know, I looked through the Historical Society and saw some stuff that went back to the original settlers. And there was, they talked about the, the farms that were around here, and they've got pictures of them, which, you know, we may not be familiar with, but you want to go and have a tour of the ancient village, of the ancient houses that were built here in the 1880s for original farmsteads, they're still here. Not just within the village, there's a few that are in the village, but there's some that are out around. Like Schrader's House is over on, we know the Conrad House is here, but we've got Schrader's House, which is a little two-story thing, it's over on East, East Wilson, by the, by the, by the Connor Shaw Building. I didn't know that one was there. I knew it was an old one, but I didn't know that that was one that was one of the original settlers, settlers over here, Elmer Schrader. So anyway, there's a lot of history out there that we can go and dig up, that's even on the internet today. And you can go and use what you want to go and possibly get some things going within the village. And I can turn that over to Historical Society, I copied the, the folder, did not know it existed until now. And.
So, your second to last paragraph says the urgency is due to him coming to town next week.
Yeah, well, it's the first part of August. I don't know exactly what time it is. I know that the, the problem was that this is your meeting and you're gonna have another meeting in another two weeks.
Yeah, actually three.
And it's probably gonna be three.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, after he's gone, I don't know exactly what, what his schedule is. He's coming back for a class reunion. He was born in 62, so it'd probably be, or 1960, so it'd probably be a 78 class reunion. And I don't know exactly where they're gonna have it, but he said he was coming to Piattown and stay with me. And so I said, okay, fine. I couldn't find anything about one for a class reunion.
I think it's a generous offer, and I think we want to try to do what we can to find it. I just don't like the time constraint you're putting on us.
And that was, believe me.
So we don't have a site, we don't know how much anything's gonna cost, and we, and we don't have a budget for it, which makes it all real challenging for me.
Yep. Well, I...
But I like the idea, and I like the, I like the, the fact that he's nice enough to donate it to us, and I think art is good for a small town.
Well, we, well, I, I do too, I do too. I mean, I was just reading about, once again, you know, the, the history, and when you get into the Potawatomi Indians, you find out that in Indiana, they went and they moved them over to Arkansas and Oklahoma, and they have a Trail of Death that goes through Illinois, from Danville, Illinois, across to the Missouri, the Mississippi River. And there's, along the way, Boy Scouts of America have made, different groups have made signs that they go and they put up in locations where the baby, the little children died, because they, they had lost forty, it was like a month and a half trip, they, they started at the first part of September and ended up October third, over in Kansas, walking that and going by wagon, and they lost forty kids, like two adults and forty children out of the group that they had transported over there in that death march. So, I knew of the Trail of Tears for Cherokee Indians, but didn't know that the Potawatomi had also gone through the same sort of thing when they'd been relocated to their new reservation. And I'm planning on going to those areas across the state. So, just something of interest, you know, that if you, you're looking at touring Illinois, these are things that, you know, may not wanna go and see, but they're still attractions that you can, you can go and see and experience. And we've got good history at Peatown. We just gotta go and put it together.
Are we good with the location at the, at the mill?
Well, I mean, I think we would wanna talk with the Historical Society.
Well, I think we should get a letter from them saying...
Right.
We're on...
But I mean, we actually own the property, so...
Do what we want, but we wanna be...
Right, no, absolutely.
We gotta figure out where to put this thing.
Right.
So, it doesn't look like it's a mill and then a thing.
Right.
I mean, I think there wants to be a little bit of...
And without having an opportunity to go out there and kinda lay it out and try to figure, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, Steve had told me too, he says property is really somewhat critical out there, due to the fact that there's not a lot of property that's associated with it.
Right.
You know, fortunately, we've got Bob Shin that lives next door, the Barrett's House, and I don't know if Bob or his dad lives next door there, but it's a Shin house. And very possibly, if we could go out, we might be able to get an agreement to, you know, annex a little bit of property there, the Parkway, to, to help along, to get a little bit of a separation, because it's a small block, the property actually ends at the, at the, in the back, right at the stack that they had back there, so, that's really close. And he said, "As far as the width goes, it's not very wide, you gotta fence on Baranski's side," which is also a sure tell relative to, you know, but, and then on the other side, there's not, there's not a whole lot of property there. And I know I mentioned one time that, you know, if, if we have that detention pond back there, even when it, you know, which it should never get developed, but it may be something that the village could go and incorporate to be able to utilize for festivals of sorts, to be able to have out there, because you've got almost, almost an acre of ground out there. And if you had any opportunity for little antique sales or whatever that they go on, that might be a place in the facility that you could utilize that for, for their little tents or whatnot that they've got. So, anyway, that's about all I have.
As Trusty Bowden said, I mean, it's a generous offer, it's just trying to sit here tonight and figure out exactly what to do is the hard thing, you know, being on this short timeframe.
Well, and I, I do understand that, it was, it was something that, I'd been there at the beginning of June, I had to go out and see my folks and do some finagling with them for, you know, what their future's gonna be like, because they're eighty-six and eighty-eight, still in their own homes, but things are getting harder for them to get around. And, you know, they do not wanna go and move anyplace else, but they need help. So, we're, you know, dealing with that situation, and while I was out there, I saw this structure, this, the sculpture they had made, and, like, three weeks later, he goes and calls me up and says, "Hey, are you possibly interested in this?" Well, I got ahold of Donna and found out when your next meeting was, tried to go and make what arrangements I could, and I, I wish that I could go and give you a whole lot more time. I'm three-quarters towards financing it myself, and then, you know, getting reimbursed for it later on, because if you don't take it, I think I could probably get Shin to go and take it for Black Diamond, maybe find some place it, or, you know, maybe, like, there was a talk maybe about the library might be interested in it, you know, I, I don't know, I haven't talked to them, because I'd already made a commitment with Chris to, you know, possibly...
Well, I mean, I guess that was gonna be my suggestion, is if he's coming this way anyway, and if he wants to transport it, you know, this way, and give us an opportunity to try to work through some of the details, you know, try to find a location.
Yeah.
Try to take a look at, you know, the budget to see where, we have money that we could possibly, you know, utilize some funds to go towards it. Those would all be things that we would be able to do in the next few weeks, we can't necessarily do it tonight.
Well, I think that Chris is in a position where he could say, if you're gonna make an honest effort towards doing it, that he's more than happy to probably follow through on it. You know, we can work on, I'm sure he, you know, everybody'd like to go and have the, have the money in hand when they, when they deliver it, but at the same token, you know, I...
Well, I think we wanna execute...
He's also focused amount of what he can go and give back to the community.
Sure.
Well, I think we wanna execute this well, I don't think we wanna just stick it somewhere. And then, after it's there for six months, go, why'd we put it there, why don't we put it somewhere else?
Yes, yes.
I, like I said, I think it's a cool thing, I think it's pretty generous to do it, and I think we just wanna make sure we do it right.
Okay.
I think we could, you know, find a place to hold it, you know, in the meantime, you know, here on property, and then...
Well, it'll be, you know, between five and six hundred pounds.
Right.
But I mean, if we've got, you know, we've, we've got storage facilities we can go and put it in, I know, you know, keep it out of the way, keep it safe, whatever, you know, and we've got equipment that we can move it with.
To me, you know, I think that would be the best plan at this town.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your time.
Yeah.
If we come to pass the meeting, the whole, I need to speak again, I'll speak again.
No problem.
And Donna, thank you for making the plaque. I, I had done it just in case, because I know you're, you're rushed and you're short on time, and, you know, just in case, I...
I came in early tonight.
Well, thank you.
It was there, so...
Anything else for the Committee of the Whole?
I've got something, two things. Number one, can we talk to Aqua and make painting the water tower on Rat's Road a priority? That, if you stop and look at that, I mean, it looks like we're storing our water in a slide right up there, I mean, it's horrific, you know, the people are coming to the community.
Well, and one of the reasons, you know, it was slated to be painted...
It was, right.
Last year, this year, and we held up on it.
With all the, yeah, for sure.
With all the background, right.
The Ranch Road?
Yes. It was actually something that we talked about doing this, this budget year, but since the sale was going forward, instead of spending, instead of spending a quarter of a million dollars to do it.
That didn't include the inside if they had to paint it, but it's something I think we need to prioritize.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll have a conversation with them about that.
See if we can...
I think it's been mentioned in the past too, but we'll mention it again for sure.
You don't, you don't pay much attention, but if you stop and look at it, it's like, oh my God, it's... The other thing, you know, we got a big, I don't wanna call it a hole in the roof, but on the fascia of the building out here, about that big, where there's no shingles up at the top.
This building?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's been that way for probably a year and a half. And as the water gets back there, it's gonna destroy the structure that the shingles are attached to, and instead of being a five-hundred-dollar job, it'll turn into a five-thousand-dollar job, and I think we need to prioritize...
Yeah, actually, I didn't, I wasn't even aware of that.
Yeah, it's, it's probably that big, and the shingles are gone.
We'll, we'll walk outside and you can show me. Well, I must not look up a lot.
And that's been up there for a long time, so... I don't think we just wanna patch that hole, I mean, we wanna look like we know what we're doing, I don't know. That's it, that's what I've got.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trusty Jones, seconded by Trusty Ham.
Jones?
Yep.
Cam?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.